Hi folks. Today, we're back with Colt News, following up at the Columbus Board of Education Administrative Building, where he goes to get the names of the people who he claims quote-unquote assaulted him while he was there the first time. But before we start today's video, a quick announcement. Thank you to all my current channel members and subscribers. Without you guys, I couldn't keep the channel going, and it means a lot to see your support. If you want to help support me even further, please, consider becoming a member. Not only do you get sweet perks with emojis, custom VIP Discord rooms, but it's a great way to help support me as well. With all that being said, let's enjoy today's video, shall we?
... or me, rather. If we can't do that, then we're going to... I don't know, they got construction going on here. How do you get in the building? Are they closed today? I can't hear you, say that again?
They want people to go into the loading dock.
Going through the loading dock? Alright. Where is the loading dock?
You're not an employee.
I'm not, but I definitely need to come in here into the lobby. So is this lobby essentially closed today then?
Yeah, we're trying to work construction on it.
Alright, there you go, there you go. Alright, they are working today though, right? Because I had a little situation, I need to have the police come over here and get some info.
Now, you just heard that construction worker tell you that the employees are entering through the loading dock today because of construction work on the front lobby. How hard is it to understand that? That they are working, they do have employees in the building?
Information, how are ya? Yeah, I need to talk to an administrator. Sweet, appreciate ya. What are you guys putting in?
Uh, we're doing just card access on the door.
Card access, where? Like, oh. Oh, very cool. So is this not gonna be a public lobby, you hear that? Interesting, interesting. If you missed that, they're putting in card access. Hey, Chief! You're one of the folks I need to talk to! Hey, I'm gonna have the police come back over here, but I could avoid that if you can just give me your name, sir.
The gentleman you saw turn away from engaging with this jack wagon is one of the people he's claiming assaulted him in his first visit, where he was told by that same security guard, he was not allowed to take photos on their property. Outside of their property, on the public sidewalk, he was permitted to. That did not sit well with him, so he made his way into the building, yelling at the security guard and staff. And when the cops come, he lies, as all frauders do. Claiming he was there just to get literature, but yet pulls out a microphone and, well, begins to act like he's an actual news site.
Ah, psychopaths. So anyhow, so they're putting card access. Did you hear that, folks? They are, they have security here putting in card access on these two outside doors, which tells me they're gonna try and remove the public lobby altogether. Okay. For some reason, I suspect these folks' behavior, they're concerned is gonna warrant a lot of angry citizens coming in. So they're going to put card access on the exterior doors to keep the public out of this building. This is Columbus City Schools Board of Education. Card access on the exterior doors? Did not see that coming, not gonna lie, did not see that coming. While we're waiting, let me go get you the update and tell you why the two police officers that came here after Officer Golden came and set these folks straight, the two officers that came, they weren't so helpful after all. As you may recall, they had, they seemed to have zero desire to actually watch the video of the assault here. And, uh, I made it very clear there were multiple assailants.
Shenanigans, I'm calling shenanigans on this video, because you lied right there. Now, you offered to text him the footage. He told you, "No, I cannot give you my personal number", due to the fact that he has received threats in the past. He's offered you his work email, but instead you chose to show him there, while his partner talked to your prop, I mean, your fiancee. Now, would you like to try that again?
And yet, the police officer only got the information of one of those people. I'm actually gonna share that information while we're waiting for admin-
Not on my channel. I will not allow you to give out the security guard's name, due to the fact that I believe it'd be morally wrong as a journalist to give out something that is not a matter of public record yet. So, with that being said, I apologize if this is an inconvenience to any of you. If you like, I will place a link to the original video and his first encounter as well, in the description box below.
Victim number two, Mr. Michael Norton, entered the building, part of which is open to the public, and, here's my favorite part, while filming, attempted to provoke a security response. Now, how many times did I tell the security guards here to leave me alone? I would think, if somebody's coming at you and you're saying to them, "Leave me alone, please leave me alone, don't touch me, leave me alone", I don't, I don't think that would be construed as a, uh, trying to incite a response from them. If anything, I'm trying to incite them to leave me alone. I don't know.
Shenanigans yet again. Wow, you like to go for records. So how about this? When you were there the first time, and you got all your documents, all your pamphlets and literature from all, what looked like to be all seven cubbies, you were told to leave. You waited thirty minutes and then returned. At that point, the security supervisor told you to leave. You began to act hostile by calling him names. And then, when we're told to leave by staff, you refused. Got your courts tangled around him, and was getting closer and closer to another staff member. He pushed you away. That's not assault, that's him doing his job.
Call me crazy. I said, uh, tch, tch. Mr. Myers states Mr. Norton attempted to enter sensitive areas, and when asked to leave, pushed Mr. Myers. Alright, um... So as of right now, almost 100,000 people have seen the assault of myself that took place in this building, and the video's been up for less than two days. Anybody that watches that video, I am absolutely confident will see that I was not the aggressor here. No, no, you're lying, you're lying! What makes you lie? Here at the Columbus City Schools, uh, Board of Education Administrative Offices. I was very clearly not the aggressor here.
I beg to differ, but let's jump ahead to where he tries to go around to the loading dock to confront and, well, annoy and harass other staff members of this building.
Oh, let's see. Here we go. Hi there.
Ooh, access denied!
Hey, I need an administrator, please. Alright, so as of right now, it has been twenty-three minutes since we showed up first and asked to speak with an administrator. We went around back, rang the bell, somebody came out, opened the door and immediately shut the door. Uh, it's clear they're not cooperating with us. These are thugs and criminals, this is the kind of behavior you would expect from thugs and criminals. When you-
What the fuck are you talking about, man?
Walk into a public building in America, certainly in Columbus freaking Ohio, you should be able to walk in peacefully, get some literature and walk out. And yes, you can record yourself doing that. You have every right to do that, and if you are assaulted, free piece of advice for people, now I know a few people thought that I, "Oh, you pussied out, you left, you ran", you're damn right I did. My advice to you is the same advice that I would take myself. If you are anywhere and somebody assaults you, remove yourself from the situation immediately and call 911. If you don't-
Ironic. I'm a bit confused. Why didn't you take your own advice? Why didn't you simply step outside the building? Stay in front of the doorway area where you could record them? And call the police and say, "Hey, these people assaulted me", and had the cops come and deal with it? Instead, you continued to act aggressive, yell, and raise your voice and make mocking tones to people, which we've covered in the first time you were there, could have got you a disorderly conduct charge due to the fact that you were in violation of the statutes that lead up-
Stick around, piss them off more and get them to assault you again, that's not how it works. I am not here to assault anyone, I am certainly not here to be assaulted. So, if I am assaulted, I am going to remove myself from the situation. Let me rephrase. If I am assaulted again, I will remove myself from the situation and call 911. As of now though, I did call the police and have them on the way down here to complete their investigation. I think I was saying earlier, the two officers that came out to get the information didn't do their job, they simply didn't do their job. They only got the name of one of my four assailants, and that's unacceptable. They were all responsible, uh, one of them tried to prevent me from coming in the building entirely, another one came charging at me claiming he was gonna bust my camera. The woman put her hands on my camera, uh, property, my equipment, she put her hand on my chest pushing me. These people need to be held-
Wow, you mean the, uh, the employee that separated you from her colleague when you two were yelling and shouting at each other and getting into each other's faces in an aggressive manner? The one who tried to de-escalate the situation? You're calling her an assailant who assaulted you? Oh, I am so sorry that somebody trying to prevent an act of violence upon your person hurt your feelings.
accountable. When you walk into any public building in America, nobody should be putting their hands on you. Oh, that's just blowing right open there, isn't it? Oh, I see, the button must've gotten pushed. That feels real cool. Hey there, are you by chance, hold on. Are you by chance an administrator here? I've been trying to get ahold of an administrator here and nobody seems to wanna help, so if you could tell them that I'm waiting for an administrator and I've been here for twenty-five minutes, I would really appreciate it. Just, any actual administrator. Head of security would be fine too. Are you the police officer we asked for?
We don't have a police officer at this time, so-
Oh, there you go, folks, Columbus, Ohio does not have a police officer at this time, alright. So, were you here?
Is there a problem here, or?
Oh yeah, oh yeah, sure. Are you, are you a police officer or an employee of the school board? Yeah, I'm trying to get ahold of an administrator, I came here last week and was assaulted, and the police only got the name of one of my assailants, so I was told to get the names of the other assailants. And I was instructed by the prosecutor to try and get it myself from these folks, and if they won't give it to me, to involve the police. So I do have a police officer on their way.
Oh, you do have one?
I did call the police, and I'm waiting for them to show up. So were you, were you summoned here because of me? Did somebody say, "Hey, come down here, we need security", or I just, I see Capital Crossroads, I don't know what that is, I'm bas-
Capital Crossroads is a security company that works within the city of Columbus in its downtown area, for a certain block area. They provide cleaning services there to help keep the outdoor areas beautified, and they also do outreach for homeless, help people get their fines and stuff waived, and provide a small amount of security. So when the Columbus police are not available to handle stupidity like our fake Marlboro man wannabe, Mike Norton, they have them come out and see if they can help solve the situation.
Say that, uh, they called and requested a, uh, police officer, but we don't have any police officers on duty right now.
Interesting, there's no police officers?
So, I work for-
Are there school police officers for the city?
I work for Capital Crossroads. And we work downtown inside the SID, which is the Special Improvement District. We have a special duty officer. Uh, he's not available right now.
Well, you could probably help maybe, I don't know, I mean, maybe you could help. Um, so here's, here's what I need, um... I can show you pictures, let me just see. Have you been in here? I did step in there, yes, I, I did-
And so what is it that you're requesting?
Why did I step in for? Um, I can show you. It'd be real easy, I mean, I'd be outta here if I had this information. I need, this man's name, he is currently in this building right now, and I need to- Are you here with, uh, with, is it Tai- Taiwan?
Taiwan, yeah.
Is it Taiwan? How do you?
Taiwan Jones, yeah.
Taiwan? How's that spelled, you know, is it like T-Y?
T-Y-J-U-A-N.
Of course, alright, I like it, I like it.
Unique little name.
I like it, yeah, um, yeah, we called the police, I, I saw you guys, the response then, the police response that we requested?
Yeah, usually, uh-
Do you want me to tell you what the scoop is, or, I mean, I already told Taiwan what we came here for, so it's kind of, he went inside, I think he'd get it. I was assaulted here last week by four people, and the police, when they came out and did a report, inexplicably, they only got the name of one of the four assailants.
Wow.
So, it is, so, um, but I have the whole thing on video and everything I got. I know for a fact at least one of those three is in this building currently right now, 'cause I saw him. We just need names so we can provide-
There currently aren't any, we don't see any information right now, so-
Okay, so- The prosecutor advised us to get the police to get the information. So what do we do?
Seriously, you don't know what to do? You call the investigator in charge of this case and you tell them, "Hey, the prosecutor wants us to try to get their names, but they're not cooperating with us. Can you see what you can do? And if he has to, he can get a court order." I think you misunderstood what they wanted you to do. I think they wanted you to get in contact with the investigator of your case, but instead, you take it upon yourself to go down there and possibly cause another incident. Because that's what's good for clicks and views.
Police officer in route, and then you guys can, uh, move, uh, forward.
Okay.
Come there, but as of right now, they're not releasing any information, I mean-
Yeah, that's, that's how they are, they're very uncooperative. Very uncooperative. Yeah, appreciate it. So to recap, if anybody didn't hear that, the good folks here at the School Board of Education Administrative Offices are refusing to cooperate with the police on their investigation. So, the, uh-
The security.
Capital, Columbus, Safety, Security, I don't know, I'm baffled by who these folks are exactly.
Well, it's no wonder a frauder is baffled by security. But, that's for a different day. I'm gonna jump ahead to where we get some bad advice that he gives to the kids of, well, the nation, and has some really weird ideas about what the responsibilities of the school board for Columbus, Ohio is responsible for.
Hey, if you're a student in the Columbus City School District, you should learn from their example. If you do something wrong, don't admit it, double down, and when the authorities come to you and ask you about it, refuse to cooperate. You know, this is, it's quite symbolic, this little sculpture here. It kinda looks like the taller person there has an axe, and I don't know, to me, it's symbolic, I think it symbolizes the hundred million dollar tax levy that's getting axed this coming November, because these people don't deserve a hundred million dollars from the taxpayers. Not when there's school shootings going on, they do nothing to solve that problem, but God forbid, somebody walks into their offices with a camera? Ooh, man! Within one week, they have key cards installed, so the public can't walk into their building anymore.
I'm actually speechless on this one, I don't know where to begin. You come here and you give that horrible advice to the youth of the Columbus school system, telling them to basically commit crimes and be troublemakers, and then lie about it, expecting no consequences. Then you have some notion that your little video is going to help stop a tax levy? But I think the biggest and most egregious thing you have done in this entire video so far is think that this one school board in our entire nation is responsible to stop violence in schools. That is an issue that a lot of people have a lot of theories on, and it's a very hot top, hot topic issue. But I will say this. What makes you think they would have the answers that no one else already has come up with?
Be ashamed of themselves, but I'm pretty sure they have no shame. Oh, sir, would you like a comment on what the chances are you guys are gonna get a hundred million dollar tax levy passed after people are assaulted walking in the lobby here? You folks wanna comment on the hundred million dollar levy, do you think you guys deserve it? School shootings galore, and you guys put up, uh, key cards that prevent the public from coming in?
Just come here. Shut your stupid ass off!
Sir, you think you're gonna get that hundred million dollar levy? The only thing that would make this seem more appropriate is if the dumpsters over here, now, I wanna clarify, I'm not emphasizing or encouraging vandalism, I'm saying, if those dumpsters were on fire, 'cause this place is a dumpster fire, it really is. The School Board of Education is a hot mess.
Well, if you feel the school board is a hot mess, there's ways of fixing it, it's called running for the office. You can then fix it. But no, that's too much work for you. You wanna get some shut me up money because, well, you're a frauder and that's all you guys want.
And what other line of work can you imagine? Assaulting somebody that comes into a public lobby and not losing your job for it? Not at all. I mean, hook me up with a job like that, right? I can just go around and just push people around and threaten to break their property and grab their equipment and stuff, and no consequences? Well, it's across our fingers, there's no evidence yet that there will be no consequences.
I'm going to be jumping ahead to where the police show up and talk to him. He makes some outlandish statements about the First Amendment arguing community, making a change by getting, uh, card readers put in at the front door, and acting like the school shooting epidemic is an issue that one city can solve. So, due to the fact that his callous nature about such a sensitive subject matter is used, I'm just gonna jump ahead. I, like I said, I'll put a link to his original video down below, and you are more than free to watch it at your own leisure.
Hi.
How do you do?
Are you the people I'm here for?
I sure hope so, um-
What's going on?
My name is, uh, I'm Officer Shay.
Yes.
Mike Martin. I was here one week ago today, I'm a journalist.
Do you have a report number?
Sure, yeah, you bet.
So I'm gonna start with the tail end of that, and, you know, towards the beginning, so, any misdemeanor, uh, criminal investigations, we have a zone investigator, so, uh, which takes some time, 'cause there are hundreds of reports and cases deep. So it will take some time for that criminal investigator to get to your report, but what I can do is find out who the zone, this is Zone Five, I can find out who that criminal investigator is, and that would be the officer who, once they get to your report, it's assigned to them, then they do the follow-up, they would come and say, "I need this video footage", "Okay, I need to know who this person is", so that would be your officer who would get that information.
Alright, and you could find their information?
I can find out who that zone investigator is for you and give you their name and number, so, we start with that. But as far as where we started, this is Columbus property, it says the public is the one that you're managing.
Or the education park, what are you saying, or private property? Who owns supportive education though?
It belongs to the Board of Education, so they-
But it's a public, they-
They are the, right, it doesn't, like, so this is where people get confused, you know, they, at a grocery store, just because it's open to the public does not mean it's public-
Grocery stores are private property.
Right. Or even a city park, right? City park is-
It's public property, yeah.
But if you are not abiding by the rules, regulations, the statutes of the city, then a representative of the city has the right to say, "You can't be here for this listed reason."
So instead of calling the investigator in charge of your case, which I'm fairly certain there would've been one provided to you, you came down to the Board of Education to, well, get a confrontation going, so you could put it on YouTube. But let's go to what the cop is talking about. Yes, just because the Board of Education is publicly funded, it does not mean they cannot set rules, time, place, manner, and restrictions on when it comes to taking photography or recording purposes. Just because it is a publicly funded area does not mean you cannot be trespassed there. That is a myth that the fraudering and sovereign citizen communities have spread amongst themselves to the point where they have believed their own lying cannot tell the truth.
So, the Board of Education, they are the agents that are responsible for this property. They have to maintain it, they have to pay for the, 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 obviously they have what they want.
Let me say they, it's the taxpayers that pay for it. The taxpayers pay for it.
You're right, but you're, you're, you're going down the line, right?
No, I know, I'm just saying, but it's just-
So ultimately, it's the Board of Education, so they establish their rules and regulations as to what they allow on their property, and they say that they don't allow video recording on their property, they have a right to do so.
No.
You can dispute that in a court of law, I'm telling you that I've been doing this for twenty-nine years, and that's my interpretation of what the law is, so, um...
I haven't seen any policies or spoke with any administrators that give me any impression that taking photographs and videos on, uh, school board property, which is owned by the taxpayers, is illegal, so-
Why must you turn my office into a house of lies?
Now, I just caught you in an out-and-out lie, because on your very first visit here, a member of staff, the security guard, who you said was one of the people who got in a confrontation with you, who assaulted you, told you you were not allowed to take photos or record on their property. He was empowered by the administration of the School Board Administrative Building to tell you that. Yes, it is not illegal to take public photos, and it was not illegal to do that there, but they told you they have a policy preventing it, and you ignored it.
I'm not saying it's illegal, I'm saying if they determine that they don't want that on their property, then they have a right to say, "We, we, we don't want you doing that here."
Good thing they haven't tried that yet, 'cause I would definitely fight that.
So, I'm just, I'm just telling you, I'm working backwards, okay? So I'm guessing that that's probably where they, they came from? Did they take it too far? I don't know, I didn't see any of this. But what I will do is get you the name of the, um, investigator, the Zone Five investigator, that obviously I think that they've called as well, so having explained to you that if they don't want you on this property, then you do legally need to leave, if that's what they tell me.
Alright.
Just so we're clear, before I, before I even talk to them, just so-
Under threat of arrest, ma'am?
Well, we'll see.
Is that under threat of arrest?
If they say, if they say, "We want him to leave", and I say, "Ah",
And you refuse. So typically, I wouldn't say I would arrest you, I could charge you with criminal trespassing. I'm not saying I'm gonna throw you in handcuffs, but you could be looking at a charge of criminal trespassing, if that happens.
If that happens, I would, I would look forward to fighting that in court anyway. So anyways, I appreciate that guy's number, uh, and, uh, yeah, I mean-
Do you have the report number you said you had?
I don't believe I am in violation of any laws whatsoever, and frankly, if they came out and said, "You can't stand on our parking lot", I would fight it, and I am confident I would win that fight.
Yeah, Ohio criminal trespass doesn't work like that. You see, it falls under four parts, and you would fall under part three. If they enter upon or remain on someone, on a person's property after they have been identified and have been warned by fencing or by someone associated with that property, the trespasser shall not be there. Therefore, if that police officer goes in there and the min- and the administrative staff tell them, "We don't want him there", and you refuse to leave, you are breaking the law, and you could go to jail.
Ma'am, so what is the difference between "we wouldn't be in", or "we wouldn't leave under threat of arrest" and you saying that you would pursue criminal trespass? What's the difference between those?
I'm not saying I would do anything.
I gotcha.
This is their property, and therefore they have a right-
It's not, ma'am, it's-
It belongs to the Columbus Board of Education.
But who owns the Columbus Board of Education? That's the taxpayers, it's the citizens. It's a, it's a government entity.
So if you went to-
That's like going to the post office and saying the post office says we don't want you in the park.
If you went to the courthouse right now and engaged in behavior that they didn't allow-
Courthouse is different. Courthouses are different, if I walked in there in a courthouse and it said, "No photography", I'd say, "This is a public lobby", the law, there is so much precedent-
How is it different when the taxpayers pay for it?
There is so much precedent for this, courts have-
I'm sorry, folks, but there's only so much of this frauder's nonsense I can stand. So, let's jump all the way to the end of the video where we get an update on his case.
August seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three, and I have an update here from the prosecutor's office in Columbus, Ohio. I gotta admit, uh, I kind of expected this, I didn't expect it immediately though. Keep in mind, I went in- Keep in mind, I went in there on the ninth of August to, uh, give them some evidence and talk them about this case, and, uh, this letter was actually written and, and, uh, dated, dated the, the ninth of August. So, the same day that I went in there to talk to them, without taking any time to look at other evidence, even give me time to send them other evidence. Uh, they didn't talk with, uh, the other witness, which was there, um, they said, "The duty prosecutor has evaluated the complaint you filed with the Columbus City Prosecutor's Office, and based on the evaluation, criminal charges will not be approved because there is insufficient evidence to support probable cause." Hot damn! "This decision was made by thoroughly reviewing the totality of the circumstances and applying the known facts to the applicable law. If you disagree with the duty prosecutor's evaluation, you may submit an appeal to the Director of the Prosecution Resources Unit, blah, blah, blah." I'd like to say I'm surprised. I'm not in the slightest bit surprised. What will surprise me is if these scumbags don't actually try to charge me with a crime. That is the other shoe that I am waiting for to drop.
And when that shoe drops, I will report on it. I'm in another video here. He does go on to encourage his followers and sycophants to call flood, but in his, "I'm not telling you to, but here's their number" kind of way. If you guys like this video, please like, share, and subscribe. Leave a thumbs up and a comment because it helps me with the algorithm. And if you haven't already, please, consider becoming a member to the channel. A dollar ninety-nine's a great way to show your support, and it helps us grow even more. With all that being said, be well, be safe, and I'll see you guys next time. A special thank you to all my channel members. Without you guys, I couldn't keep the channel going, so thank you.